Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise at this point? I'll call upon Reed McMurty to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll come down to the podium. To the rostrum. You stand on a podium.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As many of you may remember, September is -- we have a tradition of inviting the participants in the Boys and Girls State Program that is run by the American Legion to join us and get a report on their activities. And so at this point, Irv Porter of District Six will give us that report. Irv Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And on behalf of the Boys and Girls State Program, thank you for your support, not only in allowing us to introduce this year's Boys and Girls State delegation from Greenwich, but also for the little expertise session that we have every year with you where you describe to us how simple it is to understand parliamentary procedure. And it's based upon the astuteness that you put forth with this group, that their performance this year was again extraordinary. On a more serious note, maybe some of you saw the introduction by President Clinton and President Bush two nights ago on CNN where they introduced the Presidential Leadership Scholars Forum. Presidential Leadership Scholar Forum. This is intended to promote the notion of leadership, to have a faculty and staff that can provide people from all walks of life with an opportunity to learn more about leadership. And I was struck with two things as I watched it. One, we've been doing this through Boys and Girls State in Greenwich since 1977. And secondly, President Clinton, along with Senator Lieberman, are two very distinguished graduates of Boy State and Boys Nation. So it's particularly honoring for me to be able to present you with this year's delegation who Livy will now introduce.[197.01][197.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Irv. Since 1997, it has been my privilege to work with Irv Porter as co-chair of the Boys and Girls State Commission. As you could hear, Irv is not only the heart and soul of this program, he's also the head of it. We believe in the program, and we are totally committed to its continuing success, just like some of the other civic-minded graduates who are here tonight. David Detchin, Greg Fruman, Dean Goss, Steve Meskers, and Doug Wells. They're all graduates of Boy State. Did I miss someone? No, okay. The 2014 Boys and Girls State delegates are students from Greenwich High School, Brunswick, and Stanwich, and they will wave when their name is called. Julia Marash, she's out sick. Reed McMurty from Brunswick would let us in the pledge. Blake Rankin, Greenwich High School Student Body President. Peter Russell, Greenwich High School National Merit Semi-finalist. Victoria Slater, Stanwich, our first Stanwich student, we're very pleased about that. Julia Wang, Greenwich High School National Merit Semi-finalist. Thomas Williams. And David Zhao, who couldn't be with us. So thank you so much, and please give them a rousing RTM welcome.[294.33][294.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porter. Thank you, State Representative Floran. And to the delegation, it has been our privilege that you joined us tonight. Thank you all for coming. All right. As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our special meeting on August 25th, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the proposed minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. I notified our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I will recommend tonight the following organization of our call. There is one consent calendar item, that is Item 1. I will recommend that Items 2, 7, and 9 be combined for voting purposes, and that we would then consider separately Items 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8. So at this time, I will designate for placement on our consent calendar Item Number 1, which is a resolution postponed from our June meeting. It is the appointment of Scott Johnson to the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2017. Are there any objections to the designation of that item for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Consent Calendar Item Number 1, and proceed to poll your delegation? At this time, I will recommend that we move to suspend the rules to combine Items 2, 7, and 9 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine Items 2, 7, and 9 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining Items 2, 7, and 9 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. So we will begin with Item 2. We will complete the combined items, and then take up the remaining separate items in order. Do we -- let's see. Item Number 2 actually was also postponed from our June meeting, so that is now before us. That is a motion to appoint as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission Jennifer Kostler for a term expiring March 31, 2019. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Candace Garthwaite, Chairman of our Appointments Committee?
Good evening. Jennifer Kostler was interviewed by the Appointments Committee on August 7th, and let's see. Eleven districts were represented, District 2 was absent. She will be replacing Patricia Dillon. Ms. Kostler is passionate and committed to the idea of maintaining the historic character in urban context of the town of Greenwich. She is a trained architect and has extensive design experience in residential, hotel, and luxury retail projects. She has worked on such projects here in Greenwich, in New York, and globally. She's lived in Greenwich for 10 years and has moved her architecture and design firm to Greenwich from New York. And she has presented to the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board. Ms. Kostler wants to apply her professional expertise to help balance the demands of development in Greenwich, and at the same time not lose the historic underpinnings of a 375-year-old community. The vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee interviewed Jennifer Kostler back in June, and as Ms. Garthwaite explained, she's being appointed as an alternate to the Historic District Commission. We spent quite a bit of time talking about what the roles of the Historic District Commission are. As you may know, the Historic District Commission does control various applications that are properties in our historic districts across town, but they also are advisory to the Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to certain historic zones, including any building being constructed on Greenwich Avenue. Ms. Kostler is an architect, she is very knowledgeable. We didn't have any issues with Ms. Kostler. Our vote was 11-0-0. District 2 is absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Item 7 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first electman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item Number 7 resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/2017, Nicholas McRae.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 7 has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee interviewed Nicholas McRae on September 4th. All districts were represented. If confirmed as alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. McRae will be taking the place of Mike Borkowski. Mr. McRae is a third-generation resident of Greenwich and has a BA degree in Architecture and Residential -- I'm sorry, in Architecture and Construction Management. Mr. McRae owns his own business wherein he serves the residential building community as a designer. Additionally, he helps clients with the variance and permitting process in Greenwich and Westchester County. The majority of his permitting clients are in Greenwich. When questioned about the potential conflict of interest, he explained that he would recuse himself in cases where he would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This, he pointed out, is standard procedure for the Architectural Review Board, so he knows how it works, as he is a member also of that board. If appointed alternate, then he will be required to resign from the Architectural Review Board. The vote was 9-0-3. Districts 1, 2, and 3 were late to our meeting and therefore missed a portion of the interview and discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Berg with our land use report.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee interviewed Nicholas McRae last Monday night. Ten districts were present, and as Ms. Garthwaite explained, Nicholas McRae is a lifelong resident of the town of Greenwich. He is an architect. He is a very thoughtful, articulate, and visionary person. He will be, as she said, filling a alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had no issues with Mr. McRae. The vote on Mr. McRae was 10-0-0. Districts 2 and 7 were absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 7. Item 9 now comes before us, once again, our first electman, Peter Tessie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item 9 is a substitute resolution, reads as follows. Resolve that the sum of $105,444.79 is hereby appropriated and added to account 2014, CDBG projects known as Housing Authority Greenwich Boiler System Replacement Project, $60,695.79 at Armstrong Court, and $44,750 to shelter for the Homeless Pacific House Homeless Facility Roof Restoration Project.
All right, thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item 9 has been moved and seconded. Just to explain, the substitute resolution was offered to include language whereby the RTM actually appropriates these funds. And so that was the purpose of the substitute. Is there any need to read it again? Hearing none. The substitute resolution on Item 9 now has been moved and seconded and is before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met Thursday to discuss Item Number 9. Princess Erfey, the Community Development Administrator, walked us through this item. And also Sam Tam, the Health and Human Services District 4 Delegate, and I are members of the Community Development Advisory Committee, which actually voted on this appropriation or this decision in June of last year, which is why you find Item 9 before you, or this year, this past June, I'm sorry. Each year, the Advisory Committee meets to allocate HUD entitlement funds to various community development programs, and the committee anticipates receiving a certain amount of money. And last year, we were very pleasantly surprised that HUD awarded us about $50,000 or about $55,000 more than we initially anticipated. So our total allocation was about $735,000 for program year 2014. In addition to that, there was about $50,000 from prior-year activities that were closed out from HUD from program year 2013, and those two amounts combined allowed us to get to the $105,000 excess money for 2014-year projects. The Advisory Committee identified two capital improvement projects. Phase 1 of a boiler system replacement at Armstrong Court and a roof restoration project at Pacific House to receive the excess funds, and in June, the Advisory Committee voted overwhelmingly to support those allocations. Our committee, the Health and Human Services Committee, voted 11-0-0 with District 2 absent to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this item up last Monday evening in the Parks and Rec Conference Room at Town Hall with all districts represented. I have nothing to add other than the fact that one person in our committee asked Ms. Irv, who presented this matter to our committee, why we are funding restoration of a building in Stamford. She replied that because Greenwich does not have a homeless shelter, there is a reciprocal agreement among the towns in Lower Fairfield County to provide funding to this facility in Stamford, which opens its doors to all homeless in the area. There was very little discussion on the matter, since the resolution did not present any legal issues, we just took a vote on the merits. It was a request for funding. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. You've pretty much heard the basic facts of the case. I would only add that the Advisory Committee does have 28 residents from the town, one of which was on our committee. We met on Monday, September 8th at 7:30. All districts were present, save District 6. We heard laudatory comments from our one member who was on the Advisory Committee. This is simply a transfer of funds to spend the dollars now rather than transfer them to next year, and our vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 9. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combine Items 2, 7, and 9, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on Item Number 1, our Consent Calendar Item. That was the appointment of Scott Johnson to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Those in favor, 180. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 0. That item has carried. That now brings us to the first of our remaining separate items. Item Number 3 now comes before us. James Michael of our -- I'm sorry, Dave Thompson of the Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item Number 3, this is a substitute resolution. Resolve that the sum of $350,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to capital account number Z312-5962015138, known as Bridge Maintenance Program.
Thank you. And the substitute is to correct the account number, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. Arlene Lamazza with Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Good evening. Public Works Committee met and had the pleasure of having the support of Jim Michael, our chief engineer. This item requests $350,000 to be put into the department's bridge maintenance program. The reason we're asking for this is because the Bering Hill Bridge, which was supposed to receive some minor maintenance, was found to be not in fair condition, but actually in failing condition. Therefore, the department was obliged to move ahead with a project that was greater than expected. The -- sorry. This account is typically used for minor bridge maintenance, but they felt that they had to move ahead with this project once it was discovered that it was failing. So what this does is actually replace the money that was used for the work that was done to date. Our vote was 10-1-0. The person who objected, District 7, thought that the money could be better spent on other bridges rather than this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Warner with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. The Finance Committee took this up on Monday night, September 8th. The facts are essentially the same as you just heard. The bridge was inspected in 2000 -- this is a classic case. The bridge was inspected in 2012. A small repair was expected. When they got into doing the work, they found that the required repair was much more serious. And per town policy, there is -- I shouldn't say town policy, but past practice, there's no contingency funds for this. The additional repair amount was required to do a thorough job. The new repair will last, according to Jim Michael, who was with us, 50 to 75 years. A vote was taken. It seemed very straightforward to us. The vote was 10-1-0. District 6 was absent, and the negative vote was because they thought we should have an individual thought we should have contingency dollars to take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 3. Don Hamilton, District 7.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow delegates, friends, and new members of the RTM. My objection to the project is really, in large part, symbolic. It's symbolic of a much greater problem that persists across the town, and that is a lack of effective capital planning. Fortunately, in the opinion of our engineering department, who I have the greatest respect for, the useful life of the Bering Hill Bridge itself can be safely extended for at least three years at minimal cost. So I propose we ask the department to do just that and avoid yet another interim request for an item which should have been vetted and prioritized through our CIP process. Absent moving toward more effective centralized capital spending planning, the burdens will increasingly fall upon the operating departments to be more timely and more vigorous in continuously reviewing and prioritizing and classifying projects like Horsehead Septic System and Bering Hill as high-risk, subject to more intensive testing, and whether or not they are amenable to interim repair. Timely reporting would empower the RTM committees to start probing earlier. DPW and town infrastructure are front and center because infrastructure is so critical to the quality of our daily lives. And infrastructure presents unique challenges, both in predicting and in risk-weighting system So capital spending is one of the few areas under our complete control. A no vote should be looked at as a yes vote for reforming our capital funding and allocation policies and procedures. Thanks.
Further discussion on Item 3. Mr. Clark, District 4.
All right, I'm not sure if what I want is the point of information for you to the Public Works Department.
Then why don't you come forward so everyone will hear, please? Bill Clark, District 4.
I'd really rise for a point of information. Seems to me that within living memory, such as the past 10 or 15 years, that bridge has been replaced. Does anybody recollect it, as I do, that the Bering Hill Bridge was closed for six months or so and replaced sometime within the last 10, 15, 20 years? And if so, why is it back before us? But first of all, can anybody from Public Works answer that question?
Mr. Thompson.
The bridge did have work done on it, done about as short as four or five years ago. It was the substructure that was repaired. We had the foundations still savable, but they had to be fixed up, and we did a lot of work on those. So now the bridge that we're dealing with is the superstructure. And our consultant, I might add, our consultant has taken a recent look at this and recommends immediate replacement, immediate replacement. We're using pre-stress beams, we can get this done in a very short period of time once they're ordered and delivered to the job site. We really don't have a lot of time to play around with repairing a structure that's totally deteriorated all the way through the upper structure.
Thank you. Let's not have a private conversation, please. All right, further discussion on Item 3. Mr. Clark.
Just a follow-up question. Could none of this have been determined five years ago? Seems to me that's not that far back, and why have we now got an emergency that should have been, I think, foreseen when they did this prior work? And I guess my question goes right back to the Department of Public Works.
Mr. Pruner.
Go ahead, I'd like to ask you a question. I'm happy to answer. I beg pardon?
Well, these are questions that come up in committee. You can -- I'm recognizing you to offer your opinion as to what we should do with Item 3 tonight. We're not investigating this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mark Pruner, District 10.
Yeah, this is a classic example of policy in town that we might think about changing, but now's not the time to do it. As you can hear, the consultant has recommended that this bridge be replaced immediately. It doesn't make much sense to do a patch on something that is a problem. We do that too often, so I would recommend you vote for this. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those were Items 2, 7, and 9. Those in favor, 187. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 0. The combined items have carried. Item 4 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Joseph Siciliano, our Director, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. Item 4, resolve that the town of Greenwich accept a gift from the United Way for the purchase and installation of a removable outfield fence in strike zone at Byron Park. The gift is valued at $25,625.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. This item came up September 8th at our meeting. Present to help us were Joe Siciliano, Jenny Bixby, Aaron Montague, and Laura Geffs, who -- Joe Siciliano, Jenny Bixby, Aaron Montague, and Laura Geffs, who represent the United Way. This is a, this is a low-impact field, fence. The current field is in the area behind the tennis courts at Byram Shore Road near their pavilion. The field is currently grassed over and not used for any scheduled town recreational activities. The field, residents seeking permits to use the pavilion there also have the right to use the field. This fence, which will go up, is a temporary fence. That is, it cannot be taken up and down easily, but it can be removed seasonally. And people who hold events in this pavilion, which holds about 125 people between May and October, are given the ability to use this wiffle ball field. The field is primarily used by teens and younger people who either ride their bikes or take the bus. There's no traffic impact, per se. I would say that the Department of Parks and Rec consulted some community groups in doing so and found that there would be no tournaments held at this field, so there wouldn't be any major impact to the community that we can see. My only other comment was is that there was some, we had one negative vote because the, the town had not consulted the District 2, I'm sorry, the Byram District in consulting them, but in the end, our vote was 10, 1, 0 in favor of this, this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members. Our committee took this up with Joseph Sliano present, and Snoe Snyder, who's the Superintendent of Recreation, and Brandon Lakoff, who had worked with the Wiffle Ball Youth and United Way to get this gift. The following details were given. The area of the park was previously used as a picnic area. The ball field does not exist now. As you've heard, it's been grassed over. United Way will provide a removable outfield fence that is constructed and installed for the field. A removable strike zone will be constructed and installed behind the home plate area. The field will not be exclusive to wiffle ball. The fence will have a five-inch cushion on the inside, which is about an inch more padding than is normally on fences for other sports. United Way will buy and give the fence and strike zone to the town. The price includes the equipment, the installation. The strike zone is removable. It is not a backstop. This field will not be used for tournaments. It's much too small. There will be a maintenance fund. The town will continue its work of cutting the grass and emptying the trash. The fence will be stored by some individuals who work with wiffle ball in a private barn. There was a question about parking. It doesn't appear to be a problem. The youth playing wiffle ball are not of driving age, and there's adequate area for drop-off by the ticket booth, and there is bus access. We were very pleased with the gift, and we voted 12, 0, 0.
Ms. Sodikon, will this outfield fence bear any resemblance to a Green Monsta?
No comment.
Further discussion on item four. Did Bob McKnight, District, Chair of District 4?
Good evening. I'm Bob McKnight, Chair of District 4. We took this item up last week at our district meeting. First time we've heard about it. We were highly impressed with the dedication of the wiffle ball proponents and the generosity of the gift. I'm also the Vice Chairman of Byram Neighborhood Association. This gift was, the presentation was made to us three weeks ago. At that time, we decided we would take no action because we did not have enough information, and we thought it was premature. Any delay would not impact this late in the season for a gift primarily to be used next year. These questions were echoed throughout our district meeting. Basic questions such as, how was this site picked out of all others in the town of Greenwich? Who made the decision? Was there any impact study done? I've heard tonight that the parking would be minimal. These children would ride their bikes, take a bus. Any of you who have children, any of you who've played sports in the town of Greenwich, no, your parents come watch you play. That's the soccer mom syndrome. Now, any of you who have been to our beautiful park know we have limited parking. We share the parking lot with the baseball field, the beach, the boat club, tennis courts, and a town pavilion, which has been pointed out, rents this out for income for the town, and uses this piece of turf for, for picnickers during the events. As I said, we had more questions than answers, so at this time, we are asking our fellow districts to give us enough time to come to a, a smart vote, an educated opinion on this. So on behalf of District 4, Mr. Moderator, at this point, I would like to make a motion to postpone item four.
Until?
I'll postpone the October call, right?
To the October meeting, okay. That being offered on, that motion to postpone item four to our October meeting being offered on behalf of one of our districts, it does not require a second. It is debatable. Discussion on the motion to postpone item four.
Voice.
All right. That being a procedural issue, I can call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing item four to our October meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, let's try a rising vote. All those in favor of postponing item four, please All right, thank you. All those, you may sit down. All those opposed, please rise. All right. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Motion to postpone item four to the October meeting. And I ask that you conduct your voting expeditiously as we will need to await the result of that before proceeding further. Now, actually, is Lucia Jansen here? Yes.
During your rising vote, many members of the public chose to rise.
All right, we're now taking a written vote. It was pretty close, Mr. Dolan, but I appreciate that point. I should have cautioned our guests, but thank you for reminding me. All right, Ms. Jansen not here yet? Okay. Why don't we await the result? If you want to get up and stretch, now would be a good time. We have the result of the vote on item three, which is the appropriation for the Bering Hill Bridge Maintenance Program. Those in favor, 161. Opposed, 24. Abstaining, 2. That Can we get those voting cards, please? Ms. Jansen, are you ready?
I just watched it.
I know. This was, this was our... All right. While we're waiting for the remaining voting cards, I did want to remind both our committee chairs and all members that our rules set out a process for reviewing the town budget in advance of our May budget meeting, and that process, according to our rules, starts this month, where the standing committees establish subcommittees. And it goes on to say that our Budget Overview Committee will coordinate with all of our other standing committees with respect to distribution of budget information. And so Lucia Jansen has kindly offered to summarize what her committee is prepared to do to help us in this, what I believe is our most important responsibility, which is review and final approval of all expenditures in town. Chair of our Budget Overview Committee, Lucia Jansen.
Yes, good evening. Hi, thank you for waiting for me. I was at a school function. Last week, the Budget Overview Committee sent an email to the chairs of each standing committee in preparation of our RTM budget process that, as the moderator said, begins in September. Some of you are new or unfamiliar with the RTM rules, but they do describe a budget process that starts in September and goes throughout until May, which is our decision time. The Budget Overview Committee has typically been involved in the February timeframe. We usually come out with a comment at the BET guideline time in October, but our active time is in February. We really want to improve on this process and actually follow what our forefathers on the RTM prescribed, which was this idea that in September, we begin to look at the department goals and requirements for the upcoming budget and having conversations. The Budget Overview Committee simply wants to collaborate with you in terms of reporting structures, in terms of providing you any information that we receive from our participation at BET meetings or information we gather. Really, it's just about having much more collaboration, much more discussion with each standing committee, starting in September. So that's really all I, we wanted to say is, we're very eager to start the fiscal new year. Each standing committee chair was to communicate to the Budget Overview Committee your budget subcommittee delegates, and we've assigned on the BOC standing committee delegates who will be working with your standing committees throughout the year. So look forward to the fiscal year. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me and/or the standing committee contacts for each of your respective committees, and that's it. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We have the result of the vote on the District 4 motion to postpone item four to our October meeting. Those in favor, 108. Opposed, 77. Abstaining, 5. That motion to postpone has carried. Item five now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/17, Frank R. Cantelmo.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodikon with our Parks and Recreation Committee report.
Good evening again. Mr. Cantelmo was not available to be interviewed, so on behalf of both the Appointments Committee and my committee, we would like to postpone him to the October.
All right. That being offered on, that motion to postpone item five to our October meeting is offered on behalf of our two standing committees, does not require a second. We can adopt such a motion upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to postponing item five to our October meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the motion postponed is adopted upon unanimous consent. Item six now comes before us. Once again, Mr. Tessie.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/15, Hans Christian Thalheim.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthway, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee interviewed Christian Thalheim on September 4th. All districts were represented. If appointed as a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation, he will serve out the term of Donald Lansman. Mr. Thalheim is a 2012 college graduate with a degree in finance, and he is serving his first term on the RTM in District 6, where he's an alternate on the Budget Overview Committee and an alternate on the Legislative and Rules Committee. Christian grew up in Old Greenwich and has been an active user of the parks and facilities for his entire life. It was the fee for the town paddleboard courts that prompted his interest in the Board of Parks and Recreation. In, in the course of our discussion, the delegate from District 8, who had spoken to the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board, and this is something that our committee does do, to help us understand challenges and needs of certain boards. The delegate from District 8 pointed out that the Board Chair feels there's an urgent need for a nominee who can add value around the financial and user issues for the golf course. And the Board also needs someone who has, you know, the experience... And the Board also needs someone who has, you know, the experience and the expertise to interface with the newly-formed Harbor Management Commission. Mr. Talheim, when hearing this discussion, offered up that he would be quite interested and willing to help the Board with the golf course issues and the financial challenges therein. And also, he said that he and his family are active boaters and sailors. When questioned about his time commitments, because this is a man who certainly has a lot of commitments, plus is working full-time, Mr. Talheim said that he's highly motivated and involved and is ready to partake and take the time necessary to be a productive member. The vote was 11-1-0. The delegate from District 8 felt that the Park and Recreation Board's specific needs, as expressed by the Chair, he feels that it would be best if there was a nominee with an interest in golf, who could initiate a program that would increase golf course usage and revenue, and felt that this was not met in this otherwise find candidate. And I already told you the vote, 11-1-0.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening again. As you know, Christian Talheim will be serving out the remainder of Donald Lansman's term, which expires in March this year, '15. He's a member of District 6. He's an alternate to BOC and Legislative and Rules Committees. He's a native of town, enjoys the amenities of the town, and wants to support the town. While an Eagle Scout, he worked on projects at Greenwich Point. As you've heard, he became interested in the Board of Parks and Recreation while he was checking out the paddle tennis courts in Coz Cob and met with the department, actually, to discuss the fees. His concerns are the work of the Harbor Management Commission, allocation of field space versus open space, issue of artificial turf fields versus grass-playing fields. One member of our committee expressed his preference to have a nominee like Christian, who is young and has a broad perspective instead of his own agenda. The entire committee was very enthusiastic about having such a youthful member join the Board of Parks and Recreation. The vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item six. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number six, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item number eight now comes before us. Peter Menarski, our Town Controller.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, RTM members. Resolve that pursuant to Town Charter Section 67 Home Rule Procedures, that Article 14 Retirement System Section 208A, dealing with management of funds, be amended to read as follows, as requested by the Retirement Board and initiated for home rule action by the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and as presented to you tonight via the moderator to RTM members.
All right. This is a substitute resolution, showing the editorial changes being made. And that substitute resolution was forwarded to all district and committee chairs on September 4th. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports, starting with Doug Wells and the Legislative and Rules Report?
This request to make a substantive change to the restrictions governing the Retirement Board's investment of retirement funds was initiated by the BET. The BET voted unanimously in favor of this proposed charter change. In order to pass this home rule charter change, it requires approval by a majority of the entire membership of the RTM, not just a member of... A majority of those voting tonight. We first addressed this matter last January. At that meeting, Attorney McLaughlin provided us with the statutory background and the historical perspective on this resolution. Section 208A of the Charter was created by Special Act of the Connecticut Legislature and has been in place since 1945. Because the complexity of investments has changed so dramatically since that time, the Retirement Board trustees feel that it is impossible to make investments without running afoul of these restrictions. When we considered this in January, we heard from Larry Simon, trustee of the Retirement Board. Mr. Simon pointed out that Greenwich is the only municipality in the state of Connecticut that is subject to these investment restrictions. Mr. Simon stated that it is hard to comply with these restrictions since we presently have 28 different investment positions to consider. He described the retirement system as the equivalent of a fund of funds, and the investments made by these funds are so complicated that the Retirement Board has much difficulty determining whether they comply with the requirements. Mr. Simon explained that the Retirement Board wants to be in a position to be nimble when changing its investment strategies without having to be concerned about being in violation of the regulations. In January, when we met at our full RTM meeting, by motion of the Finance Committee, this item was referred back to a subcommittee of the Finance Committee to work with the Retirement Board to draft mutually agreeable language defining the investment choices available to the Retirement Board. This last Monday evening, we met with John Chadwick, who is on the Retirement Board, as well as Gene McLaughlin from the Law Department. Mr. Chadwick explained that there is presently approximately $400 million available for investment, including approximately $22 million that was added by the town two months ago to meet our pension obligations. Mr. Chadwick explained that the money is invested after a monthly meeting of the Retirement Board. He said that the goal of the Board is to reach a point where we have 25% of our funds invested with venture capital funds, 50% in equities, and 25% in cash and diversified fixed income securities. There was a minority of committee members who were concerned that the language as presently drafted is not sufficiently restrictive to protect the town from bad investment decisions. Mr. Chadwick explained that any investment that the Retirement Board makes has to be reviewed and approved by the BET Oversight Committee, which presently consists of John Blankley and William Finger. Mr. Chadwick further explained that the Retirement Board was in favor of more specific descriptions of where the 25% cash and fixed income securities could be invested, but the Finance Subcommittee chose to indicate only those investments which were prohibited. Our committee then reviewed the language of revised Section 208A with Attorney McLaughlin. While there had been an effort made to change the word "fund" from uppercase to lowercase throughout the resolution, in two places that was not done. Additionally, we agreed that the term "trust funds," which is also capitalized, should also be revised to lowercase. And finally, we created two sentences where there was one that was particularly long and tortured. The Retirement... Our vote on the item as to legal order, after we revised it with the language changes that I'll offer up to the RTM in a bit, was 12-0-0. We then took a vote on the merits. Our vote there was eight in favor, four opposed, with Districts one... Sorry, three, seven, 10, and 11 voting no. The comments for the no votes were that the resolution as drafted is not clear, does not require enough conservative investment, and the resolution appears to be heading our investment choices in the wrong direction. At the appropriate time, I'll come back and make those changes.
Thank you. Michael Warner with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. I'll attempt not to duplicate what Mr. Wells just went through. What you need to know, I think, is that in January, the pension fund had 25... The 25% in conservative investments really had a fence built around it. And the solution we were presented with at that time was to eliminate the fence and have, quote, "the prudent investor standard" apply to the whole fund. Your Finance Committee, as was just stated, proposed to you that we work with members of the retirement fund to draft language that retained a fence and protected 25% as more conservative investments. That Subcommittee headed by Rob Pirelli-Mannetti and representatives from the Retirement Board and the Finance Committee did their work over the winter and covered not just language issues, but covered issues that were more general. And with great cooperation from the Retirement Board, we looked at how the Retirement Board documented its management process, evaluated liquidity in the funds, and defined its terms. Having got through that, in the summer, when everyone was at all points of the compass, a small task team from the Subcommittee actually worked with the Retirement Board and drafted the language you see before you. This language is simple and flexible, and it retains the protections, I think, we know that the retirement that the Finance Committee wants, and we think you will want as well. Specifically, the language does three things. It prohibits specific categories of investments that are... That would normally not be considered conservative. For example, it says such... It prohibits investment in any equity, any real estate, commodities, tangible assets like art, for example, or private equity investments. So there's a piece of this that is very specific and prohibitive that says the retirement fund for the 75% can invest using a prudent investor standard, but for this piece, these items are prohibited. Further, the language adds a general state... A more general statement. It's not intended to be a highly detailed statement, but it said such funds shall be invested in cash and fixed income securities. Typically, that would mean bonds or other kinds of investments that don't correlate with the stock market. Now, this is a general statement. It's not intended to be 10 paragraphs long. It's a little bit like the Constitution. It's intended to provide intent and give direction to the Pension Board, and we believe that's what it does. Further, before this language change, the pension fund had, as I mentioned earlier, something called the prudent investor standard that applied to the more risky 75% of the fund, but did not apply to the 25 more conservative piece. This language applies the prudent investor standard. On top of the other two items you've heard before, it applies to this portion as well. So while the language, we believe, is simple and flexible, and it's something that the Retirement Board, after much discussion and back and forth, they've agreed this makes sense for them. We've got some preliminary indications from some members of the BET that it's workable for them, although we don't have anything conclusive from them. And we think this is a good solution. It puts back up the fence we had before, and the Finance Committee voted in favor of this, 11-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand District 8 has a report on this. Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for this opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, District 8 met at its usual meeting on September 10th, and as I'm sure in all of your districts, had a fair discussion on this. I'm sorry. You wanted me to give the motion, sir? What we did is we voted for a motion to refer item eight to the Finance Committee, Legislative and Rules Committee, and the Budget Overview Committee.
You can explain the background before offering the motion, if that's what you were...
Well, let me put it out there, and Mr. Rickert's probably better at this than I am. The motion was to refer item eight to the Finance Committee, Legislative and Rules Committee, and the Budget Overview Committee to consider the item again as it performs... As it pertains to the management oversight of the retirement system funds. The vote was 20-0-0, unanimous of all present in voting. Mr. Rickert, who is much more expert in this area than I, will explain why.
All right. Well, hang on a minute. This is a motion to refer item eight to the Finance Committee, to Budget Overview. Was there anything else?
And the Legislative Rules.
All three of them.
That's right.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our districts does not require a second discussion. And Mr. Wells, I think it makes sense for us to determine if we're going to take this up tonight or not before we consider your amendments. All right. So the motion to refer item eight is now before us. Discussion on that motion to refer. Mr. Barry Rickert, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Selectmen, and fellow RTM members. As you may recall, item eight first came before the RTM in January of this year. The item was referred to a Subcommittee to examine several issues and complexities that were identified by the Finance Committee. When presenting this call item in January, Retirement Board members raised three main issues to the Finance Committee. Number one, there was a need to update arcane language in the Charter. Number two, the Retirement Board had difficulty complying with the requirement that 25% of the fund be invested in fixed assets. And number three, fund performance was negatively impacted by the 25% rule. A subset of the Subcommittee was proactive in negotiating an acceptable resolution to the first two issues, but the third issue remains. District 8 is proposing a motion to refer item eight to committees, as there are a number of unanswered questions, some of which include, number one, we are not aware of a report that was prepared by the Subcommittee to conclude on its findings. Number two, raw data indicates that it is unclear whether compliance with the 25% rule is actually at issue. And number three, the issues of fund performance and management were not fully vetted by the Subcommittee. The intention of our motion is not to point fingers or critique investment strategies with the convenience of hindsight. The RTM has a duty to the residents of our town to ensure that our retirement fund is managed effectively. District 8's motion to refer item eight to committees will help further this goal. We do not profess to have all the answers. We are merely highlighting unresolved issues that the BET, town Selectmen, and even members of the Retirement Board all acknowledge exist. Voting to approve item eight as is may shelve the issue of fund management indefinitely, something that the town surely cannot afford. We look forward to you joining us. Your engagement is critical. We all have a stake in helping to navigate these issues in a positive and productive manner. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District 8 motion to refer item eight to our three standing Doug Wells, District 2.
I think that while the intention of the motion is perhaps a good one, I think that the Retirement Board is probably adequately overseen by our BET. There is an Oversight Committee made up of two members, as I indicated. The BET sees what the Retirement Board does, and I'm not sure what would be accomplished by sending this back to committee. We made the resolution. We've put forth the charter change that the BET and the Retirement Board jointly want. Working with our Finance Committee, they're satisfied with its result. And you can ride herd and watch how people are going to invest, but investment decisions are going to be made, you know, day-to-day, and I don't see that how sending this back to the committees of the RTM is going to help that process.
And your committee is one of those committees?
It is.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to refer. Michael Watzek, District 11.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I have been a close observer of the activities of the Retirement Board for about the last four years. I've been attending almost all of the Retirement Board meetings over that period of time as sort of an unofficial observer from the RTM. No official capacity, but from time to time, I report back to various committees and to my district. This item is really just about modernizing the town charter language with respect to the rules governing the allocation of the Retirement Board's invested assets. That's all. We've heard tonight that the Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of the updated language. To me, there's no point in holding up the cleaning up of this language to allow the Retirement Board to go forward confidently.
Retirement Board to go forward confidently in allocating the investments without the concern that maybe they'll inadvertently run afoul of the current regulations. I urge you tonight to vote in favor of Item Eight. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Is it Mr. Silver? Warren Silver, District Eight.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to address the Committee, the RTM, tonight. The motion put forward by District Eight is not about finger pointing or about the past performance of the Greenwich Pension Fund, but about its future. Seven years ago, the Pension Fund had excess returns. Today, it has a shortfall of $150 million. Let me repeat that, $150 million. In fiscal 2010, our annual contribution to the pension was $7.2 million. Today, it's approximately $23 million. This doesn't make sense to me, given that the financial markets are at historical highs. Unfortunately, we are at a point where the town's annual pension is a huge burden on the budget, and current data indicates that these shifting priorities might already be having an adverse, adverse effect on the town services. For context, I was part of the Finance Subcommittee formed to modernize the language that was referred back to the Finance Committee from the January 2014 call. During the process, additional questions were raised and reported back to the Finance Committee and the Subfinance Committee Chairs, which we believe should be addressed further in committee. With that said, I want to leave you with three with four points. As a chartered accountant and a financial analyst professional with 19 years of, with 19 years of experience, I unequivocally stand behind the analysis that I provided based on the data provided to me. With indulgence of the moderator, I would be pleased as a member of this body to answer any specific questions. However, this would be more productive if addressed in committee. I don't benefit any more than any of you in the resolution of this issue, except in our common goals to fulfill our obligation to secure the retirements of the town's employees. And as a taxpayer and RTM member, ensure that we are putting the money to the best possible use. And the last point, my family and I are very happy living Greenwich. I realize I'm new to the RTM and the process, and I would never presume to dictate a solution to the question in hand, but I wish to share with you the benefits of my analysis as a member of the RTM. Please vote against the resolution. Thank you very much.
All right, we're speaking on the motion to refer, so I think you want them to refer this, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion on the District Eight motion to refer. Mr. Lucarelli, District 10.
I rise to give an altering opinion from Legislative Rules. I've served on the Committee for a good part of 10 years, and I'm a little concerned when I look at the Finance Report, and he, Mike only mentioned one of 235 members on this Subcommittee meeting with the Retirement Board Trustees. The last time we had a Subcommittee, we had public vetting, we had public hearings on our lease policy guidelines, we had reports, findings, and entire, it was entirely open, and we had a chance to debate this before it became, before us. This is a charter amendment. We're opening the books and the laws of the town on $400 million of our hard-earned taxpayer money. I think we need to properly vet this. You know, the language, I've talked to a lot of you about it. The language essentially allows the Retirement Board from going from 1945 language, which is some of the most conservative language I've ever read, to the pendulum swinging to over, they can invest over 100%, of our assets with absolutely no capital reserve. I've worked in the industry in the early part of my career. I mean, this is our invaluable employees' retirement money. 5%, 10%, a conservative amount in cash, not fixed income, you know, no asset class grows to the sky, but asset classes do have down periods. Fixed income is one of them in a rising inflation, rising interest rate environment. I think we need to really look at this, and yes, it should, remember, the lease policy guidelines went to every district in the RTM and every committee in the RTM. This was vetted by two committees with a Subcommittee, which it sounds like was made up of one individual. I think we need to look at this, and I think we should support District Eight's motion. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Mr. Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Let me comment on the process if I can. In January...
I'm a witness, you didn't touch anything.
But you have strength and power.
In January, the Finance Committee appointed a Subcommittee. As I mentioned, it was headed by Rob Pirelli-Mannetti. He had, during the winter, three or four open, noticed, public meetings. There must have been, I attended most of them, there must have been 15 or 20 people in the room. There was minutes taken, and it was well-represented. There was heated discussion from time to time. There were representatives from the BET. This was not done in a closed room by one person. This was done by a, a group of not only Finance Committee members, but alternates as well. And we had, we had wide-ranging discussion on, on all of these issues. So I don't think it's fair to characterize this as any kind of a closed-door business. This has been open. It's a language change. It's a language change that has been available to everyone. It, it solves a problem for the Retirement Committee. It, it protects us in terms of the investments, as I said. It specifies things that are prohibited. And remember, this doesn't have to do with a whole fund. This has to do with 25% of the Pension Fund that we want to build a fence around, and we want to give direction that says this is, this is the most, this is the conservative piece of the pension plan, and we've defined what that means. It's impossible to define with 50 paragraphs to give micromanaged direction to anybody, especially in the, especially in the financial area. What we want to do is to provide direction with specific things that are prohibited, and we think we've done that. And we, I hope you will vote in favor of Item Eight and reject this motion, which, by the way, if this motion is passed, we're talking about a year to, to deal with any kind of broad-based policy philosophical issues having to do with a pension fund. So let's keep our eye on the ball here. This is about a request to change the language, and the question you need to ask yourselves, I think, is does this language do the job of protecting the 25% and ensuring that it's going to be conservatively invested? I believe it does, and I hope you will vote in favor of Item Eight. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. David Detchin, District 10.
I fear that we're about ready to get lost in the weeds here, and we've already heard from some of the remarks, we're beginning to bubble up to the surface, differing philosophies, investment philosophies are beginning to float up here. And the RTM, I think, is running the risk of engaging in, in micromanagement of this particular issue, when frankly, most of us aren't really qualified to, to, to deal with that particular issue. In any event, I, my point, I think, is that the Finance Committee has already worked on this for a goodly while. They've come up with their idea of what's proposed, and frankly, I think what we all do this evening is vote it up or down. If you don't like what the language is, then vote against it. But for goodness sakes, don't punt it back for yet more flailing of this cadaver, which has already been flayed enough.
All right. Well, I see one more interested speaker. Jason Auerbach, District Eight.
Fellow members, BET members and selectmen, we must recognize all the hard work that has gone into the proposed language change. Many months of work are now finally available to the RTM. However, the fact that something has finally been placed on the call does not automatically mean there must be a vote, especially when the item, as identified by the Board itself, is not urgent. In fact, we have been asked to pass it before the end of the year, not necessarily today, and thus, our motion is in order. Let me be clear, there is nothing in the motion from District Eight that prevents this item from being brought back before the RTM in October, November, or even December. In fact, by having the language referred to three standing committees for further education and debate, we ensure that the eventual passage will be that much stronger. It is very rare to get large agreement on many items. It is even rarer to gain unanimity. Last Wednesday, many investment management issues came up at District Eight that caused us to ask the RTM to take a pause. Let me say that again, we're asking for a brief pause. Over the weekend, maybe you know or perhaps not, we have heard a debate on why this item should be approved and any and all other concerns relegated to a later time. It will be difficult to get another bite of the apple as the other issues that are demanded by the RTM's attention. What is it they say? Measure twice, cut once. Give all of our RTM members a chance to hear the concerns that prompted a low-key yet large district to become involved in such an intrepid way. In fact, we went to great pains to ensure nobody was surprised by this, thus several speeches. I spent the last several months focusing on the RTM process, the rules of the RTM, and ensuring that we are an educated body. Everyone in this room deserves to hear the concerns that caused an entire district to stand up and say, "We have more questions." This debate could yield several outcomes, not limited to stronger language in the item, or perhaps a formation of an RTM committee to look into the structure of the retirement fund, or many, many other possibilities. By asking that this debate continue for one month should not engender disappointment, but rather hope that the RTM can make educated decisions. We all have a duty to the people who elected us to dig deep on these issues. This is our chance to meet that calling.
Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards? District Eight, motion to refer Item Eight to Finance, Legislative and Rules, and Budget Overview Committees. If you are in favor of referring Item Eight to those three committees, you should vote yes. If you are opposed and want to take Item Eight up tonight, you should vote no.
Mr. Moderator, can you state the full motion, please?
I have it here, sir.
I just did. This is a motion to refer Item Eight to the Finance, BOC, and Legislative and Rules Committee. I have the result of the vote on Item Six. This is the appointment of Christian Tallheim to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Those in favor, 178. Opposed, six. Abstaining, five. That item has carried. All right, we will need to await the result of the motion to refer before proceeding further.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, we still have not...
Excuse me. Mr. Tallheim, for what purpose do you rise?
I just have a question. For the motion, the motion to refer to pass, is it a simple majority or two-thirds?
A simple majority.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, we still have not heard the full motion as submitted by Mr. Gates. Can we have it rewritten, please?
Did the Chair not read the full motion when he presented it?
You did not, with all due respect.
This is a motion to refer Item Eight to the Finance Committee Legislative and Rules Committee and Budget Overview Committee. That's what we are voting on. There is additional language here, which I will read, but this doesn't govern the referral. It says to consider the item as it pertains to the management and oversight of the retirement system funds.
Why does it not govern the referral?
Sir, we don't stand up and yell questions. We're voting on a motion to refer. I'm waiting for the votes to be tallied.
Mr. Moderator, let the record show that...
Sir, why don't you come forward and state your name?
My name is Tony Turner, I'm a member of District Five. I also am a member of the Retirement Subcommittee, and I take great exception to a motion being referred without instructions, because it seems to me that we're headed down a path where there is no direction. It could spin out of control very quickly, and when I heard the motion by Mr. Von Kaiserling versus what is being read, it was two completely, not different motions, but it was half-baked, if you will. So I just want to go on record that we're not getting the full, we're not getting the full motion.
Sir, I just read the language that was on the card.
You win.
This isn't a battle, sir. I read to consider. All right, we will need the result of that vote before we can determine if there is any further business to transact. All right, we have the result of the vote on the District Eight motion to refer item eight. Those in favor, 83. Opposed, 107. Abstaining, 1. That item has failed, that motion has failed. So District, I'm sorry, motion, item eight remains before us. Mr. Wells, on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
As I indicated in my report earlier, we made some minor language changes, which are really in the nature of Scrivener's errors. In the first line of the resolution, at the second to the last word in that line is "funds," with a capital F, we changed that to lowercase. In the 13th line, it's the line that begins with the words "general statutes." Later on, it refers to trust funds. We change the T in "trust" and the F in "funds" to lowercase. And then, three words later, is the word "trustees" with a comma at the end of it. We deleted the comma, inserted in its place a period, deleted the word "and" just after that, and then made the T in "the" capitalize, so the one sentence ends with "investment of trust funds held by trustees," and the following sentence begins "the Retirement Board or the Corporation trustees, the case may be." Finally, in the 16th line, there is a reference again to the word "funds" with a capital F, we made that lowercase "f." Those changes were passed by unanimous agreement of the committee.
Thank you, and that's a motion to amend in that regard?
Yes.
All right. Once again, offered on behalf of a committee, it does not require a second. We can adopt upon unanimous consent. Are there any objections to that motion to amend offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee? Hearing none, that motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Further discussion on item eight? All right. Before calling for the vote, let me just point out that this being an amendment to our charter, it requires an affirmative vote of a majority of the entire membership. So it requires 116 yes votes. If you are in favor of making this change, you should vote yes. If you are opposed, you should vote no. The way this works, anyone who is absent or abstains is essentially voting no. All right? Mr. Von Keiseling.
Given that, so that if one is not happy with the condition it's in now, and we both know it does pass, it would in fact go back to being thought again anyhow, right? Because something has been done.
If it does not pass, the charter provision remains as it currently stands.
Therefore, we still have it in front of us is a problem.
It's not in front of the RTM. It's in our charter.
Yes, it is the town.
Okay, I think we all understand that. All right. So will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eight, and proceed to poll your delegation. That being the last item to come before us tonight, we will need to await the result of the vote before proceeding to adjourn. I have the result of the vote on item eight. Those in favor, 129. Opposed, 56. Abstaining, 3. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, the meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent.